Evening, Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty seventeen. If you have a cellphone, I ask that you turn on silent. I'm calling this meeting to order and would ask for a real call.
Councilmember Burns, Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French, and Mayor Brown.
Here. Public comment. Persons suggesting that City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and we'd ask that you observe proper decorum for a period of no more than three minutes. Are there any public comment this evening on the, I guess, the sole agenda item? Oh, and please come forward, state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Nancy Bolts. I live at one oh three Irwin Avenue, and I've been riding the Connector to Marshall for work for about two years. And I have not been able to find a job in Albion where I can get thirty hours a week. So, and I own my home on Irwin, so the money that I earn in Marshall, I spend in Albion. And I would not have any way to get there other than that. I do not have a working vehicle, and this has been a godsend, this bus, for me. So I would ask that you seriously consider keeping it going. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I met you.
Yes, you did. I talked to you down there at the fire station.
What is your first name?
Nancy.
Nancy, okay. Thank you.
My name is Doris McCracken, and I am from Albion. I just came to get my point of view on the closing of the bus. It's my, can't talk, can't hear me? Oh, one oh eight Valley Drive, Albion. I don't have a vehicle, so this bus takes me back and forth to Marshall to visit my mom. And sometimes she doesn't, not really a hundred percent, never call me. And I can call the bus this, and I say, "Well, where you want to go, Doris?" I say, "I gotta get over to Marshall to see my mom." They say, "We'll be right to get you, and then we'll wait and call us back, we'll take you off." So if they take this away, I don't have any way of being connected with my mother like I want to. So I wish you would just consider leaving it, you know, to pick people up and take them where they gotta go. Thank you.
I'm Wilma Patrick. I live three oh six West Erie here in Albion, and I've been a foster grandparent for four years, be five year in January, and I've been riding the senior transportation van. But we supposed to be at school at eight thirty, and sometimes they don't pick us up till about nine or quarter after nine, sometimes nine thirty. And it's very hard when I go to school and go in my classroom and I'm late. It interrupts the kids, interrupts the teacher and all, and they would, I pray to God that we couldn't keep the rider, because the rider said they could have us to school by eight thirty, by time the kids get there, and now to three thirty. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yiki Neville, and I live also on Irwin Avenue. About last spring, a year ago, my transmission messed up as I was trying to get her to work. So, on the way to Marshall, and I, they said it was not worth messing with. I know a lot of this is about money, financial stuff, but it's like, it's really hard for me to get rides in town, and if I, you know, go shopping or doctor, things like that. But it's like, when people see me come in, they run the other way because they're trying to haul me basically places. And it's really hard for me to get out to Marshall or out of town, a lot that I need to do. So I, I wish that maybe, I don't know if there's money, what kind of money they have, but whatever they have, I'm hoping they would consider and basically put it towards this if they can do this, because there are a lot of people besides me that take it more often than I am able to. Because actually, a lot of times, I don't even hardly have the dollar that, you know, that they allow me to ride there and back a lot of times, so. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One second. Ma'am, can you?
Her address.
Yeah, can you, can you provide your name and address, we just spoke?
Yiki Neville, one oh three Irwin Avenue.
Thank you.
Jay Loomis, four oh eight West Ash Street. I don't ride the Connector, but my son does ride the Connector. He uses it to go to work. I've looked over the different charts that they have put out. It does seem that there's a large percentage of school kids that use the bus to go to and from. It would seem to me that they're only using the bus, which would cost money, and not taking free school bus because either they missed or got kicked off the bus. As Ms. Reed pointed out to me one time, your kids don't always do what they're supposed to do when you're not around. And it would seem like it would be much better to have another option of them to be able to get to school if they could not make the school bus, as opposed to staying home all day, where they would miss an incomplete day of school. From the point of view of my son going to work, he works, and he works at a higher-paying job. And I have heard also that if we had, if the people weren't going into Marshall to work, then there would be higher-paying jobs here. That would seem to be a job for the EDC, would be to find higher-paying jobs, not the reason to eliminate workers going into Marshall. Because if you've got them in going into Marshall, you're basically training them to work in better-paying jobs, which would then encourage factories to come into Albion to, see, I've thought this out, but to open up more factories. Also, I've also heard that it's not good for the competition in Marshall, but in when I did take economics class many years ago, competition only works out better for everybody involved, because Family Fair will not get any better unless they are competing with somebody else. And in Albion, currently, they compete with nobody. I've been to both Family Fair in Marshall and in Albion, and there's many things in Marshall that are not in Albion. So if they figured that people were going there, they would possibly bring more things into their area. I should still have a minute left, but I can't think of anything else. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Richard Lindsay, Oclon Hospital, Marshall. We continue, Oclon Hospital continues to support the Connector, just bought a big bag of tokens that we use to give out to patients that need to travel back and forth. We also were one of the initial funders of the Connector a few years ago. We think it's been very beneficial for both communities to be able to have this option for people to travel back and forth. Again, when, there was discussions about, six months ago, about cutting funding, maybe a little bit, maybe eight months ago. We heard a lot of the same type of things that you've heard tonight. So again, we see it's just people that need to get back and forth between the two communities for a whole variety of reasons. What we saw when we opened the Dialysis Center is that the ridership did drop because there weren't, it wasn't the demand to drive, to ride back and forth to our Dialysis Center and Marshall, with the one opening here. One thing that did happen after I attended one of the city council meetings, someone they raised a question about actually transporting within the city of Albion. And it's my understanding that we do now transport from within the city of Albion to our Dialysis Center, which is wonderful. So we're glad to be able to work that through with the city, city marshal and the city of Albion. So at this point, we'd like to support it going forward, look forward to the discussion tonight, and I would be able to answer any questions you might have, so. If there's any more public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward for items for individual discussion. The purpose of the work session is basically to discuss the Albion-Marshall Connector, the Albion-Marshall Connector and financing options for that. So is there someone here from?
Elizabeth Vanout is here, from the Albion-Marshall Connector.
Okay. So if you, if you could, come forward real quick. There was a presentation several council meetings back, and the request was basically, or the issue was, that there was, how much was the amount again?
Thirty thousand dollars funding.
Okay, so thirty thousand dollars for, and that would cover how many years?
Through June of two thousand eighteen.
Okay. So, 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 okay. It's about.
From the end of September through June of eighteen.
And I know, because the presentation's here that was given, but I know council had raised some concerns, you know, one of the things that, when it first came to us, I guess the last one, I did, I voted no when I was in council, as a council member, and, you know, there were a number of reasons for that, you know, certain concerns that I had. And I guess I haven't, I'm still trying to kind of figure out how, how, how those problems are solved. I know that the last time around, I think my primary concern was the, you know, the city basically subsidizing a program that was initially grant-funded and was very, actually very limited in scope. And so now it's basically, and I think originally it was for either individuals who had certain disabilities, or seniors who needed access to healthcare, was very limited, and so it's kind of broadened. And so I guess the concern I have is, is, I still have, is basically how do we not create a system or a situation where the city just continues to give money to transportation that is, you know, it's kind of intermunicipal transportation, when in Albion right now, if you needed to, if you had a job in Albion, you didn't have transportation, there's no form of, you know, subsidized transportation within town. And so that's something that I've been trying to work through and think through. And then, let's see here, when we go through, does everybody have these sheets? Okay. On the, on the third page, where it says, talks about ridership destinations, you know, like someone mentioned earlier, a large part of that is education. There's medical, which was originally, which was, which was an original purpose. There's work, there's shopping, and there's others. I don't know what the other is. But I guess I'm trying to get a sense of why, if it's, if it's going to Marshall, why can, why isn't there any support from Marshall in trying to help us sustain it?
Well, we have our own city millage through the city of Marshall for our own rideride. I believe our city council has spoken and said that they do not want to subsidize the Connector through our city money. It is possible for other entities within the city of Marshall to support and contribute to the Albion-Marshall Connector, but that's up to them to decide to do that.
Have any been approached?
Recently, I've been talking a little bit to Oclon and the Marshall Public Schools, but nothing set in stone necessarily. And like John said last time, John Bartlett, the finance director at the last meeting, that we don't have the manpower to go around and solicit all the businesses that we think that would be able to support. So we would need you guys' help with that as well.
And then, I can see, and the other question I think I raised at the other, the previous presentation was the, it's my understanding that the, the actual shuttle itself, was that purchased with the grant funding?
It was purchased through state and federal funding.
Okay.
Through MDOT.
And that's owned by Marshall, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so if, if this was to go away, what would happen with?
Well, when we were part of the new Freedom Grant, which what you talked about before, that was the one that had to have the, I don't know the exact percentage, seventy percent disabled and senior. I believe it was in the beginning of last, I don't know, September, October, we combined the Albion-Marshall Connector service with our rideride through MDOT, through our funding application. So that, that being said, I believe, and I would have to talk to my MDOT project manager to know for sure, but the bus would probably just be absorbed into our Marshall fleet.
So, I, 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 I have one question now. So I know, I'm also aware that there's, you know, it's in the early stages of getting together, but in terms of county-wide transportation. And, you know, the, I guess the estimate for is basically kind of like a two-year.
Right, they'd have to do a feasibility study first.
But, you know, even with that, I mean, is it going, I mean, and that's something that's gonna have to be worked out, but it's like, will, would that even, would that, would that cause this to be, I guess, obsolete when that comes up? You can't really answer that, but I guess that's a, that's a concern I have, and I know that among council, there's been discussion about, you know, a millage. But I know even in, in Marshall, you know, that's, how much is the millage?
Point nine three nine three.
And how, how much is the revenue?
This raise of the millage, this year we added almost five mills to existing ones, so I haven't read the actual, but.
I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
It is, you know, this year.
Okay. Yeah. Like I said, I think it's, and even the last time, when the vote came up, you know, some local business owners in the chamber were concerned about it. So I, what I see is really kind of two competing, two competing goods, right? There's a, there's a concern about, you know, the financial impact of it, and then there's a concern about the impact on, you know, the various riders. So I think that that's something that we're trying to, trying to weigh, and I think that's why we're having the work session, because we didn't want to wait till the last minute before we actually had the discussion, so. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think this is a two-part question, if you don't mind. When the grant was first written, how, was there anywhere in the grant that said you were, that you expressed how you would keep sustaining this connector?
I was not part of the original new Freedom Grant when the service was established. I'm not sure, will do any background.
I don't think it was spelled out that way as far as sustainability. It really was, it was a new project that they thought, I don't know if there ever was a sustainability issue apparently, and soliciting the city of Marshall before we raised our.
Can you?
Yeah.
It's, it's being recorded so people can hear, so, thank you.
The city of Marshall, before we raised our millage this year, for the last thirty years, it hasn't been sustainable, even with our millage. We've had to pull from general fund, and council this year approved us to, to raise that, and we've cut expenses across the board to, so we can be sustainable going forward, and at least until, if something happens with the county, or if not, we, we have a method in place for the city of Marshall.
Okay. Councilman.
If, if the city of Albion decides to support this, is there anywhere, any place where we can get some information that if we support this, how you will be able to sustain yourself so that you won't have to keep coming back? Is that something that you could provide the city of Albion with?
Keep coming back as in?
As in, keep funding you.
Right, well, that thirty thousand dollars would take us through June of two thousand eighteen, so you would probably see us back here again. So no, it would, it would only sustain us through that long.
So you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to write out a plan to how you would sustain yourself?
With that thirty thousand dollars, we would only be able to sustain ourselves through June of eighteen.
Councilmember Reed.
Okay, I see we're under ridership destinations and under monthly ridership. You've got the number of people that ride, you've got basically what they ride for, okay? Now, I'm just wondering, I've, I've never been on the Connector before to notice, but I'm looking at the picture here. Do you have extra things on there, or, I, I see it's handicap accessible, walkers, wheelchairs and things like that on? Now, I'm just wondering, if you had a separate entity that took people who were able to get along without those things, the places that they needed to go? And this was only used for certain things, would that decrease the cost any?
As in like a separate vehicle that we would take to get able-bodied?
Okay, you, you start your traveling time at seven fifteen in the morning, which is reasonable for the education section. So like Jay was saying, kids who may be not able to ride the bus would be able to still get to school, which is very necessary, okay? You have some, most doctor's appointments don't start until after eight o'clock, okay? But that would probably be a time that people who had early doctor's appointments would be going to the hospital too. But if you just had those two kind going at that time instead of shoppers and work and things like that, that would give you a full bus for it?
It would depend on the day. Our ridership changes throughout the day, but I, I just want to remind you guys that through MDOT, through our state and federal funding, this is public transportation, so we can't discriminate whether you're going to a doctor's appointment or whether you want to go shop at Family Fair. So I guess, I don't know how we would be able to do.
About how many people are on a run that you would do?
Um, our first run, so we start in Marshall between seventeen, seven fifteen and seven thirty and pick up. Most of the time, there are no pickups in Marshall going over on that run. So then we pick up between eight and eight twenty in Albion, going back to Marshall. We have usually around six to seven people going at that time. Just off the top of my head lately, it's been work and usually summer school. We're taking a lot of people to Marshall High School right now for summer school. And then there might be a few doctor's appointments in there, too.
And on through the day, how many numbers?
There's, it really fluctuates during the day. There's not a steady pattern, but I would say on an average run, probably five to six people. But that's not a good average because it fluctuates so much. Our daily ridership is anywhere from fifteen to forty people.
And how many people, with, how many seats do you have with the?
We have about, I believe it's eighteen, depends on how many wheelchairs or walkers would be on, because then they, they would take up a seat. But also, one thing to keep in mind with that, sorry, is that because of the nature of going back from Marshall to Albion, we have these set pickup times going back and forth. And so to keep on schedule, we wouldn't be able to take eighteen people at once back and keep on schedule. So that's why we have usually an average ridership of six to seven different drop-off locations each run.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. I'm sure I have here the average monies collected per month from the ridership. But can you just give me a general guesstimate, average annually, how much monies are collected from the ridership on the Albion-Marshall Connector?
You might be able to give you concrete numbers. As far as percentage of the, the funding, it's about eight percent, which is average statewide. It's not, it's not higher or lower than you'd see in bigger and smaller cities.
It's on page four.
Fairbanks, yeah, Fairbanks revenue is always really between those percentages, so it's right on target for.
So then the monies collected are used how and what way?
They go towards our expenditures. It's a part of our revenue for the Albion-Marshall Connector, and stays within the Albion-Marshall Connector.
For upkeep, maintenance, and?
We don't use those monies for Marshall rideride.
Council, oh, Councilmember, oh, yeah, Councilmember Lawler, then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when we, I guess my first question is for, for you. When we decided to support this, the Albion decided to support this because of medical, to help with medical transportation?
I, I just, I think there was some kind of partnership between the Albion Healthcare Alliance and, I don't know the other, the other partners, but like you were saying, the, you named the grant, but I think the grant was probably just originally focused to help or emphasize access for those with disabilities or, you know, seniors and healthcare needs.
Okay, so my second question is, this is just kind of very hard for me to decide because there's people I know that does need to support themselves for work, and there's people that I do know that for personal reasons need to ride this bus, but at the same time, I really feel like we need some extra help instead of just carrying on the whole thirty thousand, you know, somebody that really help us share this, this, what they're asking from the city of Albion. But if, if I was to support this based on disabilities and doctor's appointments, if you needed, if a rider needed some other, like the shopping or visiting job school, would it make a difference if, if it wasn't for a medical reason, like going to a doctor or appointment, or coming from when you get out of the hospital or anything like that? Would it be, would you be able to like charge more for, if you're going to a job, or if you're visiting, or if you're coming from school, or if you're just going shopping, or does it have to stay at a baseline rate?
I believe it would have to stay at the same rate, no matter what your destination was.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I, I passed.
Oh, okay.
I forgot, I know pieces, I know, come back, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Reed.
You know, I, I, I think having it is, is a very good idea. I just think there's some kind of other way we got to work out something, because that's seventy-five thousand dollars in nine months that Albion has paid out. Because if it was forty-five thousand dollars in September of twenty sixteen that we contributed, then you get to another June, another thirty thousand dollars. That's in a nine-month period of time. I also think that Albion needs to provide itself with another grocery store, and that's something that our EDC needs to get to work on.
I agree.
Because I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not bringing anything in about competition, but I'm saying that we need another grocery store. I can very well understand people going somewhere else shopping where the prices are cheaper, because I have went to Family Fair myself, went in there and saw something that was fifty cent higher, fifty to seventy-five cent higher than I know that it is at a store in Jackson. I would walk right out, get in my car, drive all the way to Jackson, because I refused to be hijacked. And Albion needs to get another grocery store here, so that our people are not running all over the world trying to find a decent price for grocery. But I think seventy-five thousand dollars in nine months is a whole lot to be paying, and is this going to be every nine months?
Well, the forty-five thousand was paid out in September of sixteen, which would have lasted, that forty-five thousand lasted us through September, the end of September through twenty seventeen. And then that thirty thousand would take us from that end of September through June.
That goes through June eighteen?
Yeah.
Through June twenty eighteen. That's a little over.
The, the other question, I guess. The, the other que- I mean, I guess when, when Councilwoman Reed was speaking, it reminded me of another concern I had, because when I, so there are people who, you know, people, Albion has residents, many of them work outside the community. Um, but, but the concern that I raise is that what, what started off, perhaps let's say, let's say as a partnership and there was kind of joint funding, whatever, um, between um Albion-Marshall, now what's happening is the city uh is, is probably bearing this portion of it. But then if you're a resident in Albion and, you know, you have a relative who's at um, you know, a, a, a care facility that's not in Marshall, or you, you work at a place that's not in Marshall, the city is not offering any transportation for you um to, to have access to those things. And so I think that was, you know, another concern is that um, if, if the city is, you know, expending that kind of money, is it fair just to have um it targeted to a particular location and then still have to bear the full price of that? So like, you know, so if I'm, if I live in Albion, I live on uh North Mingo Street, you know, in the upper northeast corner of the city, and I work out in the industrial park and have no transportation, the city basically provides no way for that person to get to work. Um, so that was another kind of concern is that um. I, I understand um those who use that for getting to work, but, but again, like that's not something that we're even offering to, to all residents um who, who have transportation issues. Um, and, and really with no, um, there's really no plan, because I guess something we had talked about last time is maybe trying to develop a plan. I know that when we approved, the council approved the first forty-five, there was a quest for kind of to, you know, get philanthropic contributions. I don't know how much of that we actually made up. I'm sure we're not, we didn't make up the whole, the whole thing, so. You know, I, I just, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a, like a sustainability, a, a way to sustain it and then also to address the, the real, um, the other real kind of transportation issue within Albion and to try to see how to, how to do that. You know, until we can, you know, have the, the county transportation system.
Mayor, if I could, um, just to go back a little bit, when I first arrived here almost three years ago, there was the conversation with a number of organizations because of the closing of the hospital and the understanding that um, because of the lack of transportation, there was an imperative need to provide um access to healthcare services, especially for seniors and those with disabilities. So that was the original concept of the Albion-Marshall Connector, recognizing that many of those facilities were located in Marshall. Uh, many of those original funders were um around funding for seniors. However, as it turned out, the actual ridership was far more diverse than just seniors, so that, one, we weren't no longer eligible for some of that original funding. Also, I'm hearing in regards to the sustainability of it, um, and, and contacting some of the original funders, especially some of the community foundations. They did make donations in order to get things started, but it was not their intention to be the source of sustainability for the ongoing operation. So that becomes an issue that is definitely before you in terms of what level of service, if any, do you want to provide to Albion residents? And that's really your decision. Um, but I think the practical reality is that, um, at least until there is an option for a regional transportation system, which I think realistically is probably at least two and most likely three years out, what if anything is going to be put in place um between now and twenty twenty? That's really what we're looking at. And are there partnerships um that could assist in that sustainability for the funding for this system until such time that another option is available? And I, I recognize what Mayor Brown is saying in regards to this being a limited service relative to um Marshall and Albion, and for those who want to go outside of our communities, there isn't another option available. But to make it available, somebody would have to pay for that. And most likely, we would, we would be looking at the city of Albion, so it's not that you can't, it's that something you want to do. So that's always an option before you, but there's a price tag associated, and um I want to thank Elizabeth because she did help in gathering some information relative to MDOT if we wanted to establish our own system. But it's considerably higher than what we are gaining access through, through our partnership with Marshall, through the Albion-Marshall Connector. In terms of a cost benefit, um, it's a limited service, but in terms of um the use and application of, of public dollars, it's, it's definitely beneficial for those who need the service. So, um, there's ongoing conversations and I, I do want to recognize that one of our potential partners is here in the audience, Becky Jones representing the Marshall Public Schools. So there's ongoing conversations in regards to who else can assist and with the recognition that in order to sustain this system for most likely three years, it's going to be an ongoing commitment. It's not a year by year. It doesn't make sense to keep having the same conversation each and every year. It really needs to be a longer-term commitment until something else can be put in its place. So with your permission, I would like to ask for Ms. Jones to come forward and perhaps offer from a perspective on behalf of the Marshall Public Schools.
I, I do have one additional question. So when it comes to revenue sources, um, on page four, and let's, let's assume that these are, you know, the state of how things are right now. So the state and federal government are giving roughly fifty-eight percent. Right. We're paying roughly thirty-five, and then you have the passenger fares. But in, but in, but in all of that, there's, there's no contribution from, from the city of Marshall?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because I, I guess, because the, the issue I'm having is it's, it's and, and, and this is not in a mean-spirited way, but it's, you know, we can't describe it as a partnership if there's not a, a mutual thing. Basically, the city is, is paying to send residents who, you know, who have legitimate needs outside of the community. Um, but I guess, well, I, I ask this way. Is there any reason why, let's say, the, the state funding, federal funding, all of that, is there any kind of technical reason why it still has to be housed with the dial-a-ride or with the, in, in Marshall, or administered by Marshall?
Are you saying having your own separate service?
What I'm, what I'm saying is that the dial-ride is not, the funding for that's not commingled with, with the millage from Marshall, right? Um, and it's, it's receiving federal funding, but is that, is that, when, when you receive the funding, are you receiving it as like a, a bulk of saying, okay, well, we have these, this many riders or what's, what's accounting for that? Because I guess what I'm trying to say is, why is it, is there a reason why if Marshall's not funding it, Marshall's administering it? If that makes any sense.
If I could offer a partial response to what you're indicating, there's the internal system, the dial-a-ride for the city of Marshall, and they have resources, so that includes the staff time, the system for doing the reservations as well as the fleet. So a portion of that existing system is being leveraged to provide the Albion-Marshall Connector service. So it's not totally accurate to say that Marshall isn't contributing anything, they're actually leveraging their existing resources. If there were not an Albion-Marshall Connector service, my guess, and it's only a guess, is that they would reduce the amount of staff time, the amount of perhaps fleet service that you have, but you was just funded with, you would just provide a service within your own community. So it's really leveraging existing resources, which is why if there's a cost benefit to Albion participating in the existing system. If we tried to establish our own system on our own, it would probably triple the cost. I mean, it's a significant increase in order to have your own system.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So this Albion-Marshall Connector has been in existence since twenty?
Fourteen years.
Twelve?
Fourteen, fourteen, I believe.
Fourteen? Okay, and so, I guess for me, you know, it's, it's not a pretty picture. I mean, I, I see that, um, it benefits the residents of Albion, and I s- you know, and I also see that it benefits the city and community of Marshall. Um, however, I just, I, I just think that, you know, we, we knew, you knew that there wouldn't be no additional funding after a time certain, and I guess nobody did anything, just sat and let the time came and then come to Albion and say, we need additional money. I, you know what, it just doesn't sit well with me. I think that um, uh, since it does benefit Albion and Marshall, I think, I don't understand why um they would not want to help contribute toward, you know, in this cost, and um, I just don't understand that. I mean, I, I understand they did before and they have their own um dial-a-ride, but this service also benefits them, and I don't think sure their city is equally probably profitable as big a budget as Albion does, but I don't know. Just having this, you're trying to put it all together here, but um, I thank you for coming and sharing the information.
Do you have any, anything else, sir? Thank you all, appreciate it. Oh, oh, Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, um, didn't you ask Becky, Becky to come? Becky's supposed to come over.
Becky Jones, Marshall Public Schools. I'm the Director of Business Operations there. Um, I'm going to kind of speak a little loosely here with the Albion-Marshall Connector. I was contacted a couple days ago and made aware that there's a thirty thousand dollar deficit that needs to be um, made up to keep the Albion-Marshall Connector, obviously, through June of two thousand eighteen. When I first started with Marshall a little bit ago, I was sitting at a table where we were continuously having this conversation. So myself, I too am asking, how are we going to sustain this to continue to make it work? Um, so I'm willing, right now at this point in time, to come to the table with ten thousand dollars to make sure that we can help, help with the cost of that thirty thousand dollars from the school, um, because we are using it and our students are benefiting from it. Um, so I, I wanted to say that, but I also, for the future, because this is only getting us through June of two thousand eighteen, and I'm the budget person at the school, I would like to be able to put something in my budget to help with sustainability for the connector if it is only for the next couple of years until there are other transportation things that get talked to. So I just wanted to come here today to say that um I'm offering and I have the ten thousand dollars to help with that burden. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that. And I contacted Mr. Richard Lindsay as well, and he is from Oklon Hospital, and I asked him if he could come to the table with some money from the hospital, so I will let him speak now.
All the money you have could be quite great.
We'll just, just bring in hundred dollar, hundred dollar bills. I just wanted to just provide a little bit of background. I've been sort of tangentially involved in this, sometimes more involved, sometimes less involved over the last couple of years. Um, my understanding, of course, we have institutional history issues in Marshall, so um our current people didn't, weren't part of the original conversation. My understanding was that this was originally a grant that was uh based on handicap accessibility. So there was, they had to meet a certain ridership in order to get the continuing uh funding from the state. And so the senior millage, and there was also a senior component of it, as, as a, a city manager stated. And it turned out that it didn't meet those requirements to get the continuing funding from the state. So there was a sustainability plan when it was originally put together. The money that was put together by Oklon, Battle Creek Community Foundation, um, Senior Millage, City Marshall, was enough to provide the match to buy the bus and get the, the process started. So what happened is, and when the funding stopped from the state, the city of Marshall has a millage, and I, I just looked it up, they, they collect about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to, to operate the, the uh dial-a-ride within the city. That only applies within the city, and believe me, I've had discussions with them about, because Oklon has facilities that are like an eighth of a mile outside the, the, the city limits, and they're very hesitant to do that. Sometimes we can convince them, sometimes we can't, but it's very specific where that money can be spent. And again, the city manager described it very well. This is, the, the, the part that the city of Marshall adds to this is basically they're already operating the system. So for you to start one, you'd have to buy the bus, you'd have to hire the people and pay the overhead and all, all of those things associated with it. So um, just a little bit of context. And again, we did, so this conversation took place last fall. Um, I was contacted again, actually talked briefly with the city manager on Tuesday morning about it, and then Becky contacted me today and said, what can Oklon do? So I wasn't aware that we were coming up to this cliff again, so I appreciate you calling the meeting and having a discussion about it. Um, Oklon is willing to put forward five thousand dollars at this point, so I think that would get you to half of the, of the um at the amount that's needed. Um, I do want to have a conversation about sustainability going forward because this is going to come out of my budget. So it's going to be stuff that's not, that Oklon won't be able to do for other community projects, um, because of using it for this purpose, which is a fantastic reason to use it. I'm a huge supporter of this. Um, so.
And so, and so there's, there's no, like, regulation that prevents you from, 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 from Oklon from giving the transportation?
Uh, we would be giving it to the city of Albion
Okay.
um, as a, as a check, and you would use it as you saw fit to, to support it. Um, there are some limitations on us directly providing transportation to people
Okay.
um, relative to healthcare, um, but this would be basically to sustain the service going forward, which is basically what we did the first time around. I do want to have, again, would like to have a conversation going forward. If this is going to continue, I'd agree with the city manager, this is at least three years out, I don't have any county-wide system. This transportation issue comes up every single time we talk to anybody in any community. Um, we are a community with a, a large center that's on the, the northwestern corner of our, our county, and basically rural outside of that. And how do you run bus lines over those areas and how do you get to work? Um, one of the things I was really interested about last year was to our local government finance authority um, would have funding available to, to help support this service if there were people from Albion that were working in our industrial park. And we, we found out that there was absolutely zero um ridership going to our industrial park, and the problem was that the hours were not sustainable as far as a specific, you have to be there eight o'clock and then come home at five o'clock. It's
Yes.
Some of the people described, it's, 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 it's not a perfect system. It's not like a bus system in, you know, Detroit or Washington D.C. or something like that, so. Um, I would encourage each of you to ride it, that it is, it is, it's, it's a good service if you have another way to do it. But believe me, hopping in the car is something totally different. I would love to have another grocery store in Marshall because I pay the Family Fair prices in Marshall as well, and of course I love to have Family Fair, but there are, is dramatic differences. We only have one grocery store in our town as well, so um, I understand exactly what, what you're talking about, so. I'm glad to answer any questions. I mean, I'm hope, hope you're able to, you know, reach a resolution on this and go forward.
Do, do we know, and I, this might be a question for the
Sure.
But like, do we know for the Albion residents who, who work in Marshall, do we have a sense of like where they're working?
Um, right off the top of my head, we take people to Marshall House as aides. Um, someone works at Applebee's, we had another person that worked at Tuffy. Trying to think of. Various locations throughout.
Okay, that, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
I'm, I'm just wondering. The connector. I, I don't know much about it. Like to know more about it. Like, like for instance, do you purchase your gas at the, at the rate of the station now, or do you have a certain rate that you go by? Is there any ways that you all know of that you could cut your, your
Operating cost.
Budget sum that would, would make it more, not as much as, as what is being asked for?
I took over.
At other times, but I know like now it needs to be taken care of now.
Right, um, I, just as a little background, I took over in February, and um, the last contribution that the city of Albion made for forty-five thousand, um, that was looked at, and we did a lot of work on the budget, and that's why it's down to that, that thirty thousand. Um, we're running pretty bare bones on the budget as of now, but we're all, I mean, we're consistently always looking um, for ways to cut the budget, but it's, it's pretty tight right now.
Sorry. The catch-22 with that too is also, and obviously you can cut your expenses to a certain point, but your expenses is but your expenses is what determines your revenue from the state and from federal. So you can cut a dollar in expenses, but it also, it cuts 60 cents in revenue. So you're only saving 40 cents for every dollar.
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight, all of you. And, um, Marshall Public Schools and Oklon, your contributions definitely, um, are appreciated and noted because the 50% match definitely makes, um, takes a load of making this decision. So, so I thank you for that. I also have a challenge for, for Albion and Marshall. I would like to, uh, to see more Marshall residents coming in Albion. I mean, we, we have great things happening here. We have Blues at the Bone, Swinging at the Shell, we have events at our district library. We have a Senior Fork Center here. I know you just recently, is it open yet, yours? Oh, see? We have one. That could have been a partnership. We have Howland Park, we have great exercise equipment over there. So I, I want us, I'm challenging us to, to do some marketing advertising in Marshall so residents can come over here as well as our residents go over there. They can see that Albion's on the upswing, so, thank you.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, um, I was told that if you ask not, you receive not. Like the request, Marshall Public School, if they could consider increasing their contribution to $12,500, and if you, Mr. Lindsay, Oklon could consider increasing yours to $7,500, that would mean that Albion have $10,000 on hand, because we do have a relationship and we're trying to get close to each other. I'm asking that. Ask not, receive not. So you would seriously consider that? We might have it in.
Uh, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm definitely, um, excited that we do have two other people that's on board with us with this $30,000, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. Um, and it makes it a lot easier to make a decision. What I really want to ask of the Albion-Marshall Connector is that when everybody does sit down at the table and start contributing funds, that we come up with something to sustain this connector so that we don't have to keep going back to the same people asking, you know, over and over again, because sometimes people don't want to fund things over and over again. But I am asking that if Albion has to sit at the table, can we request to have some type of, um, something that, to help sustain this? It's benefiting all three of us, so, um, let's just get to the table and, and do that, you know? So if, if she does, if they do have to come back and ask, it won't be this much, but I'm just aware that, you know, you know, there was no, nothing put in place about how they were sustaining themselves. So I'm asking that we help put together something.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to establish, um, some kind of joint committee to start talking about this now and, um, address it because we know it's coming up next summer? So I'm, I'm just proposing that we form some kind of committee and, and start talking and working on it.
Yeah, I wouldn't object to that. Are there any other questions from council? I, I know the question I had, I'm, I'm assuming we're just going to come up, I want to make sure, but the portion of the city, if it were, if the council did approve it, the portion that we'd be responsible for would be coming from fund balance?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Mayor and council, the one thing that hasn't been addressed is that if the council so chose, we could put forth a millage question for the residents. Last year when we did the calculation, a half mill would generate approximately $45,000 after the charge back from the county. That's approximately $35,000, $39,000, depending on what that was. So you do have that option before you. If you were to go that route, you could, um, put it at a level where there were additional services if that's what you so chose to do in terms of additional service within Albion and connecting to other communities. But that's just a matter of what and if you choose to go in that direction, if you're looking at a sustainability plan that's based on local residents' participation, should they choose to support it with their votes?
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. I had considered possible millage for Albion for this purpose in the future, but I, and it's a good idea if, because the citizens would then have an opportunity to vote. However, but if that doesn't happen, then I still, we still need the talks as to a Plan B. If we decide to do a millage and that didn't work, yeah, we would still need to have some talks in that regard. Thank you.
And if I could add, as my final comment, previously, there had been a committee in place that did assist in trying to identify some of the funding sources. There has been a capacity issue both from Albion and Marshall in terms of how much staff time can they devote to not only identifying grant funding, but actually submitting the application. So it would definitely have to be a committee that's larger than just the two communities.
Are there any further questions, comments from council? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a really good work session. I have to say that. And I'm just glad that we scheduled it and it wasn't at the last minute, so we had time to kind of, you know, see what options were out there and have a thorough discussion. Um, that's, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Are there any other, again, questions, comments, concerns from council?
And I'm sorry, I promise. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So they need a decision, you need a decision by August 1st? Okay, I glanced at the Monday agenda and it's not on here.
I have not been given any direction.
Oh, okay. Okay, wait, okay. So I'm onto something. So, um, do we need to add it or can we do that at council meeting?
Uh... Well, it can be added tomorrow actually, because, yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can discuss that, yeah.
We can address it. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Just so by the meeting on Monday, we will have figures as to Marshall Public Schools' contribution and Oklon and ours, right?
Yeah.
If they consider increasing their donation. Discuss that. We'll have that figured. Thank you.
Okay. Um, public comments, just general comments from the public. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and they can just be general in nature, and we ask you to observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening?
Richard Lindsay again. Just wanted to, just respond to the comments that Councilmember Brown made. And again, I am a strong believer in what the two communities can do together and spend a lot of time promoting things back and forth between the two communities, between Choose Marshall and Visit Albion Facebook pages, the two chambers, share each other's things back and forth. Some would argue me if I'm over here too often, I don't know. But I, I love this community. I love to have Marshall people come over, I love to have Albion people come over. I love what's been going on between, you know, with, with the school, so it's very exciting. I look forward to seeing more of that going forward. I do want to, I think, City Manager Mittel, who just announced, I don't remember where I saw it, but Darumpo School was going to be demolished starting next week. So the press release about that just went out. That was made possible in part by a $125,000 grant from the Crown Foundation. So very excited about that. And also, somewhere in the mail, there's a letter coming to you about a $20,000 grant to pay for the rec, uh, program rental for the school. So that was also a grant from the Crown Foundation, so very excited to see that going forward. So we're working together as two communities, plan to keep working together going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you, yeah, if you state your, your name and address.
Lester Duane Edman, 301 East, uh, West Erie Street. I would like to say that it is, I consider it a blessing for the fact that like you can't even like buy manly clothes out here in Albion. You can't get nothing. I mean, I don't have a car, and it's a blessing. I'm just 61, but it's a blessing. And I don't, I don't know what y'all got to do, but we need it. And I love Albion. And, uh, Albion senior citizens, it is absolutely necessary that we have this kind of service because I got to the hospital the other day, so it's imperative. So have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have a...
Sorry.
Yeah, I was going to acknowledge.
Sorry, folks. Good evening. Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. Richard obviously took the, took the win out of my sails because I, I had seen the, the press release as well, and I just want to say congratulations. I know it's something that's been on your radar for a very long time, to finally see Darumpo going to come down, so it's very positive and congratulations. Now, the next step in the process is the Union Steel Building, so hopefully that's the next one to go after. So certainly, congratulations. I just wanted to take that opportunity, and I'm glad to be here because transportation is certainly on the radar at the county level too as well, so I wanted to sit in tonight to get everybody's, just to see everybody's thoughts.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Loomis? Oh, you're, okay. Okay. Seeing no other, no further public comment, I'd ask for...
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.